Welcome to the Oviedo City Council Meeting. It is Monday, September 30, a little bit after 6:00 P.M. We have two items on our agenda this evening. We have an update from the county on the State Road 434 corridor planning study. And then we have a discussion of Resolution Number 3819-19, our administrative fee schedule. There was a little conflict in planning of time for the 434. The consultants thought it was 6:30. So with the blessing of council, I'm going to reverse the items. And we will start with the discussion of Resolution Number 3819-19 first. So we will just wait for staff to catch up with us on the PowerPoints. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cobb for an introduction and however you want to handle this.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mayor. If you remember back on your September 16 meeting, council adopted Resolution 3819-19, which is the administrative fee resolution for fiscal year 1920. And each year, we go through and we reevaluate all of our fees. And we make recommendations regarding whether or not those fees are recouping, doing the needed recuperation of costs that we need to do. We did note in your memorandum that there were some major changes to the fire fees and recreation and park fees. My understanding is that there's been some questions about the recreation and park fees, particularly the new program, which was the membership program that we wanted to implement this year. I talked to Mr. Boweare about the questions and primarily just to be able to explain to council how we set up this program. And so he's here tonight, as well as Mr. Whitaker. He's sitting up on the dais and he'll be assisting us.
And Mr. Dalton is over here.
As well as Mr. Boop, to be able to hopefully answer your questions and to give you an overview of the program and how we set it up. And so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Boweare and let him walk you through. He has just a short presentation for you and then, Mayor, whatever discussion the council would like to have.
Great, thank you. Drew?
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members, thank you for giving us this opportunity to go over the proposed fees. This is actual proposed fees, once again, as Mr. Cobb suggested, for 2019, 2020. Second, oh, I got it, sorry. So, we're going to start off with where we at now. One of the things that Mr. Cobb alluded to is when we go through the annual fees each year as part of the budget, we look at all different type of things. And staff has continued to struggle to, with increased fiscal hardships that, of course, include the department cost recovery of 30%. That includes parks and facilities and maintenance, which are pure, you know, cost basis and no actual revenue coming in for those areas. Of course, we've had increased costs in operating with insurance, property, casualty and medical, credit card processing fees, utility costs, water, sewer electric, and then costs and services of just doing the programming. Over the past 10 years, we've, you know, staff have maintained and sustained our current parks and facility system while facing additional hardships, like we said. So we continue to explore new opportunities and solutions on how we can possibly fund things, especially with our current master plan, along with elements requested within the 10-year capital improvements and maintenance plan. And some of those, you know, things that we do is we analyze on an annual basis our budget cycle. And we do it by going through all of our programs. Staff, for years, we've been utilizing a format that we do a pre, look at all of our existing programs, and we do pre-estimates on costs, revenue, participants, and then we do post. We utilize those program costs to actually do our budgets annually. And with that, we look at different things that have went up in, you know, fees and stuff like that, or, excuse me, costs. So with that, you know, we look at participation, actual operating expenditures, our program and event revenue, and then participation satisfaction ratings, which because if we, for some reason, if we, some of our smaller programs, if they're not bringing in revenue, if they're costing us too much, we actually do go away from those programs. The future.
Before you get into that, why don't you go over, like, with this year and the proposed?
Oh, yes. So one of the things that we looked at was with the proposed fees from last year to this year. So one of the things in doing that, we looked at all the different costs that was part of those fees, the fee structure. You want me to do this portion of it? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, the part about how we developed it.
Oh, developed it, yeah. So with that, we go through it, we look at it, we analyze each area. And with every program, we look at, of course, all of our actual costs. We look at the additional expenditures that we might have for the existing program, to include electrical, those type of things. We analyze it, and then this year, what we did is we added additional costs on top of the 2018, 19, or the fee schedule that we have now. We first of all, added that, and then we looked at the membership. So the whole idea of the membership is getting to the membership portion of it is with adding the membership fee to the new fee structure, you have to look at the 2019, 20 fee structure to get the cost savings for the membership. You can't base it on 2018 because it's the new fee structure that we've put in place for 2019 to be able to cover all of our expenditures, expenditures, all of the additional, as I kind of went to, electrical costs, utilities, and things like that are part of the annual budget. So in doing that, that's where we came up with also the ability to have the membership possibly over periods of years, as we sell the memberships, to be able to end up paying for long-term CIP projects, possible grant matching dollars for future grants, and also other areas within the budget as far as maintenance within our recreation and parks department, things that we're getting behind that we don't always receive dollars through the general So the future, once again, as I kind of went over there a little bit, it hits on all the different areas of our park infrastructure. So the membership through the community, in a roundabout way, they will be possibly putting towards our future, the Recreation Master Plan, Recreation Capital Improvements, the 10-Year Plan, the Capital Outlay, and the Parks and Facility Maintenance 10-Year So with the proposed recreation membership, it provides discounts to most recreation and park programs, and the ones that doesn't is our contractual. Our users will not get any break from our contractual groups because they come in, they have a set fee for their program use, they utilize, and they pay us a percentage off of their total revenue that they generate. Carries forward the existing resident structure, as well as the annual review of all fees, provides for participant identification. With the new structure, we will be putting things in place, identifying our clients, our community members who will be utilizing our facility, puts in some security measures as far as, we will be taking pictures of our annual membership people, resident and non-resident. And then the revenue generated from the proposed recreation may be, once again, I mentioned, it can be utilized for our capital, maintenance project repairs, and enhanced programming. And what we're proposing is for this membership to actually go into effect December 2010. We have to, you know, there's educational processes that we have.
2019.
I mean, excuse me, 2019. Did I say 210?
Sorry.
2019. We have to put in some things, of course, education, as far as educating our, the public, plus then we have to put all the aspects of the equipment in place to be able to utilize and get everything in place to be able to do it. So the end result, implementing the proposed recreation membership fee, the fee will assist the department in reaching strategic goals to execute and update our Recreation Master Plan, maintaining fiscal health and affordability of recreational programming, maintain park infrastructure, and providing a funding source for local grant matches. Now, one of the things, if I would, not if you had put up the first, we've got examples of, a couple of actual households of what that's in our rec track. Can you make it just a wee bit larger? So, this shows, in household A, it shows two guardians and two children. Basically, it's based upon the two children who have had numerous programs in one year. And presently, this is based off of this year going to next year. So with the new membership, if they came in, the resident came in and paid for two memberships, it would cost them $545 with the membership. If they did not pay the membership fee, it would cost them $615. So there will be an actual savings of $70 to this household if they did the exact same programming that they did this past year going forth, based on the new fees. Household B, same type thing, two guardians, two children. Once again, just the two children are actual, the registrants doing the programming. You have the, once again, two membership fees, different programs that they participate in the cost of that program. If they did it as a resident member, it would cost them $730 for the year, same type programming. If they did it without paying the membership, it would cost them $840, so there'd be $110 savings with the new fees. Now, one of the things that we can do is Mr. Whitaker's at the, up on the dais, and he can, for example, if you wanted him to, he can put in different things, just, you know, as far as different program and things like that, to show you how it would work with possible more people.
Do you have some other ones to add?
Yeah, we got, well, we got one other C.
Why don't you let him, let him show you.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Let's not get that complicated yet. Okay, let me get a C.
Go to the next one again.
Let's keep this simple. Got to get it in there. And in this one, in household C, once again, two guardians, two children, basically more programming, once again, two memberships, cost would be $691. If they did it as a non-member, it'd be $786 and $95 savings. Now, one thing I do want council also to understand is, one of the things that we add as part of this membership packet is for residents and residents only, is that the maximum amount of membership cost to any one family would be $75. So if you had a family of five, mom and dad and three kids, and let's say mom and dad also participate in adult flag football, or our fitness and pool programs and stuff like that, you might pay the $75, but you'd receive two memberships free. So then you're receiving the reduced rates based upon those memberships. And we did not do that for non-residents. The non-residents fee went up. One of the things I think Mr. Cobb had wanted me to state also, that I kind of alluded, was within the process of doing the planning, too, we've had memberships within our rec fees for years. And we've had non-resident memberships, not mandatory, just like this is not mandatory. And we've had that for a number of years. In the past, the non-resident was $50 for the year, and now what we're doing, what we're suggesting with this, is $50 per person during the year, no top out with the non-residents. But we've had, you know, multiple memberships, our two-month pull pass, two-month fitness pass, family pull pass. We've got a lot of memberships that we've done individual programming. So with this, with this new membership process, if you're looking at the new fee schedule with the memberships, there are savings directly to our residents if they utilize it in that format. Now, there are some formats, I will tell you, and it could happen that, for example, someone comes in, maybe they only are, you know, participant in one or two of our programs during the year. That's one of those things where we, as good customer service providers to our residents, we will give the information of telling people when we think that they should purchase a membership and when they don't. But even if someone purchased a membership for a child who played one season of flag football, there would still be a $5 savings with the new fee if they actually purchased it with the membership, only utilizing it one time.
Right, but that fee last year was only $115.
Once again, we got to base it off, we're basing it off the new fees, not going off the last year's fees.
So questions? Anybody want to start off? Keith, you have anything?
It seems like everything you put up there says, if everyone does this, you're not, you're not going to save anyone, or you're not going to increase your funding. You're going to, you're going to lose funding, right?
I think you got to pull that a little closer. That's what he asked me, Keith.
No, actually, actually, with the increased fees, and even with giving the, or if the residents purchase the membership, we will actually increase.
So you're comparing this year to this year, not last year.
Excuse me?
You're comparing this year to this year, not last year. Is that what I heard you say earlier?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. I really don't, don't, I shouldn't say I don't care, but I've given you leeway on how you maintain the 30% cost recovery. I think the decision we make up here is whether we want to increase that or not. That's something that we'll discuss, I guess, in the, in the future. But how you want to do it, doesn't matter to me, but that's what we're going to hold you accountable for.
Okay. Chief?
What do you think the percentage of participation is going to be in the memberships? Because if you don't get a big participation, then it's not going to balance out for the funding the way you want it to.
Basically, as we've discussed several times in the process of doing this, this can go several ways, okay? If the membership sells, let's say people say, well, you know, I don't want to buy the membership, then they will, and if they want to participate in the programming, then they will pay higher costs, and our revenue will go up from them not buying the membership. The whole process behind this is not only bringing in additional revenue to offset additional operating costs on an annual basis, but also to go forth with a revenue source or a funding source to be able to start helping offset future expenses for maintenance of our wrecking park facilities, CIP projects, capital outlay, as well as master planning. And of course, the one that Mr. Boop always reminds me of, matching dollars for future grants.
So the, your analysis showed that the purchase of the memberships, even with the reduced costs of the higher fees, is going to bring in more revenue?
Because we, based upon our new set fees going into place, chief, as of October 1.
And based on how many people buy the memberships?
Yes.
What do you think that, have you done any analysis or projections?
As far as the memberships?
Right.
The memberships, the memberships that we've based on, and once again, I mean, you know, this is us looking at how past, when we have increased fees, we don't increase fees every year. But, you know, it's one of those things where wrecking park facilities routinely look at all their fees just because of all the operating costs and things that can escalate from one year and next. Looking at for the capital on the membership side, anywhere from $100,000 to $125,000.
All right. I guess my question is, what do you think the percentage of people who use the facility now, families, will buy the memberships compared to those who won't?
I feel like if we can educate the families as we go through this process, I feel like the percentage of our users are going to end up paying for the membership because they will see the value. But how we got to be able to educate is it's an annual membership fee that's going to be reduced as you utilize the programs. If you're coming in for one program, yeah, like I said, with flag football, you're saved $5. Is it worth paying a membership that you might not use for the rest of the year for $5 savings? You know, that might be left up to each individual who's doing that. As a family who's got kids who participate in multiple programs during the year, I think that educate properly and explain the process, I think most of them will end up buying it.
You good? Bob?
So, let's just back up just a little bit. So the, in the fee schedule, the, if we had not worked on this membership program, there would have been two fee classes. There would have been resident and non-resident. And the, and the schedules that are shown here for resident and non-resident, those are what they suggested, or what you were suggesting the fees to be. So regardless of last year to this year, that's what you needed to cover, cover your cost recovery and your expenses. So what you were proposing is saying, okay, we could, we could do these, or we could have a membership, an individual could choose to have a membership that's $25 or $50, and then they could have a reduced fee. So going from, and some of these fees, and the mayor brought it up a little bit, I mean, some of them did increase significantly from one year to the next. But in trying to bring those down to something, you propose this membership fee.
Yeah. And in the process of doing this also, what we look at, too, is we go across the board and look at all fees. Of course, some fees can, because of the nature of the fee itself and the cost of doing the program, justifies to increase that cost, that actual annual fee, higher than, let's say, some programs, like a fitness pass, where the individual's coming in and working out in the fitness room. Now, if we've, if we've added new equipment, had higher costs and that type of thing, that's when we also look at that because now we're having to possibly, you know, you got to look at that we're paying for new fitness equipment that costs us money, of course, the city money. On programs that we know, where we've had increased costs, reclaim water, for example, Shane Kelly Park, we're looking at those kind of additional costs that have come into play over the last couple of years, where we're paying a higher rate now, so those fees go into that type of thing. Costs, you know, paying, paying the field, prep for maintenance staff, all those different things, not only for indoor facilities, maintaining our facilities, the cleaning of the facilities, cost of the clean supplies, all those different kinds of things that go in to the process of running that program. Not every cost is always broken down for every program because some, some programs, you know, senior programs that we're charging $2, you can't go full board across the board and say, okay, we're going to raise all rates the same because it's impossible to do, you know?
But when you're, when you're looking at, for instance, flag football, you're digging into it a little bit more on the cost of that program.
Yes.
And so the fees that you're showing here for flag football, for instance, you, you know, have all those, those new, I guess, the increased costs built into it that we're incurring?
And that's a prime one, Bob. I mean, one of the things, I've got notes down here directly on flag football. So one of the things, we're affiliated with NFL flag. So the affiliation with the NFL flag, we actually buy all the kids NFL jerseys. The jerseys cost, you know, is a substantial cost to the program annually. We also increase officials' pay. We hadn't increased officials' pay for a number of years. All officials' pay went up, so we have to, of course, look at that. That's additional cost directly to the program. Facility maintenance, you know, has increased. So it's those kind of things, and of course, utility fees have increased. And so it's those kind of things that we also build into the program as part of these additional fees.
Okay. All right.
Anything else?
That's all I have for now.
All right. Well, Drew, I appreciate you taking the time to explain this a little bit better to us. I mean, because frankly, as things come by on the consent agenda, and as like Councilman Britton said, you know, we rely on you to put this together, and sometimes, some of us not having users of the system anymore, don't realize the impact until this hits the presses, so to speak, and then the calls start coming in. And of course, you know, the majority of the calls come my way.
Yes, sir.
I understand that you have a 30% cost recovery. I mean, that's the way parks and rec has always been. You know, we lose 70% of the dollars, not lose, but we spend that as quality of life for the citizens, and let's face it, that's what we are. That's what Oviedo is, right? Kids and cul-de-sacs. We say it all the time.
Yes, sir.
The problem I have with this is I just don't know if I'm comfortable with the message. If I'm a parent walking in, being told I have to buy a membership to save some money to use a city facility that I'm paying taxes for. I understand you have to raise fees. I just think it would have been easier and cleaner to just raise the fee. Or charge a, because you and I had a discussion, and you told me that we spend about $40,000 a year on credit card fees.
Fluxways, I think we expended more this year.
All right. Well, let's just say we spent $50,000 on credit card fees. Well, then perhaps we charge a convenience fee to use your credit card, so that way we encourage people to use a check. I mean, not that a lot of people have checks anymore, but there has to be a debit system or something else that we can use to offset, you know, that cost. You know, the non-residents, you always had the, the membership fee for a non-resident. That's a message that I am comfortable with. The non-residents aren't paying the taxes. They don't pay the bond referendums. They get to use our facilities. Now, there's only so far we can push with non-resident fees, of course, because we do have partnerships with others, county, on who gets to use our facilities and who, you know, we get to use their facilities. But we've always been allowed to have that spread, and most cities do. It's, we're not the only ones. So that's, I guess, what struck me a little bit more with this. It's not at all that you have to recover the fees. That's the policy. The fees go up. We understand that, or at least I completely understand it. I just don't know if I'm comfortable leaving this message for the next set of elected officials and the three who are sitting here to have to deal with. Because when you roll this out in December, you know, right now it's about a dozen people who have noticed it. You know, you roll this thing out in December, I honestly think it's going to be a hot topic issue. I don't know if parents are going to understand that I paid $115 for my child to play in a event last year, and now I got to pay $155 unless I spend $25 on a fee, but at the end of the day, I'm still spending $35 more.
Go for that one program, if you look at it that way.
Okay, but you want me to go through all the, Drew, I can go through all the programs here?
Well, you're basing, once again, on last year's fee, not the proposed fee that we're going.
Okay, so wouldn't it have been easier to take the $115 fee, make it $135, and call it a day?
One of the things that we did is this, is that's one of the.
And just say, "My costs went up, and oh, by the way, there'll be a convenience fee on your credit card from now on." Just like, I mean, if you go pay your water bill anywhere, anywhere in Central Florida, if you try to pay an electric bill, a water bill, or anything with your credit card, they're hitting you with a convenience fee.
Yeah, and I might have to bring Mr. Boop up to explain this. But from my understanding, our rec-track system and our banking system, Jerry might be able to explain it better, so I might ask Jerry to come up and explain it on the convenience fee, if he would come up.
Okay. Credit card companies, Visa, Mastercard, American Express, don't like you to call it a convenience fee. I understand that. It used to be in retail. So what you do is you have a, a cash price and you have a credit card price. You don't call it a convenience.
Correct. The challenge that we have with the convenience fees with the recreation program is that some of your fees are so low that when you set your convenience fee, it would have to be a standard amount, $2, $3, $4, $5. So if somebody's coming in and they're purchasing, say, a $10 or a $15 item on the Parks and Rec schedule, they would be hit with that convenience fee irregardless. So the question would then become, is it fair for, to the consumer for a $15 fee for them to pay a $3 or a $4 convenience fee? And that's the challenge that we had when we looked at the convenience fee for the Parks and Rec program. We currently do not have a convenience fee for the utility billing payments. The, the credit card fees are actually built into the rate structure. So that's taken into consideration from that perspective.
And so couldn't we do the same thing here?
Well, that's basically what we're doing, that the rate structure is built into with the new fees. So, and the reason we looked at that, thank you, Jerry, for putting it, because with some of our program fees, they're $5, and if someone's coming in and paying with it, with a credit card, we're charging them a convenience fee on top of that. And some people are going to say, "I'm paying $5 for a, you know, or I'm paying $8 for a $5 program now." And like, if someone came in to pay for a $10 pass, you know, a member fitness pass, and they pay with a credit card, they're going to be paying additional money. So that's a, that was one of the things that we also looked at in the process. One thing I do want to mention, Mayor, in the process of how we looked at the fees this year and how staff, what the new proposed fees are, it's, as we kind of title this, going into the future. We're hoping that this fee structure taking us to the future, where we're not going to be in what I kind of call sometimes nickel on diamond, the resonance, to where we're going to be coming back and, and, you know, hitting you with another $5 increase next year for that program cost, hitting you with another $5 increase the following year with the program cost. And that's what a lot of cities do on an annual basis. During the process of this research, you know, staff reached out to multiple cities across the state of Florida who have membership fees with a lot of their recreation facilities, to, to end up getting reduced, you know, fees within their programs. It's not, you know, this is not one of those things where we just, you know, came up with the idea for ourselves. But also with the membership fee, once again, I think it's important for me to really push the idea of the membership fee going forth to be able to substantiate an actual funding source for future CIP projects, capital outlay, and in the maintenance of our facilities that we continue to get behind in, you know, we've got several parks, as well as buildings in the city, that are aging, and we need to be able to have a funding source to be able to do those fixes.
Well, you know, Drew, I, over the years, you know, spent 20 of them. We've never, ever did not say that, you know, users shouldn't pay for the operation of whatever they're using, up to the 30% cost recovery. We've always supported that. As a matter of fact, Councilman Britton and I were both here when we set that as a policy. 12 years ago was that? 15? I don't remember how long ago it was. It was a long time ago. I'm not going to tell you how to do your job. It seems that you've put a lot of thought into this, and that's very appreciated. I was the one who brought this up. I appreciate the time that you spent here this evening. As I mentioned earlier, I'm not going to be here when the wrath of this starts, but I am going to say I am not comfortable with the way this is being done. I, I, I can only imagine the confusion it's going to cause at that front desk down at the gym and aquatic center, when people are trying to sign their kids up. And you're all sitting there trying to do trigonometry and teach, and show them how they're going to spend more to save less or something, save some money. So that's fine, you know. I appreciate you taking the time to explain it all to us. I think we're all in agreement that the 30% cost recovery is the goal. I, I'm just going to personally urge you all, before December rolls around, that you go back to the drawing board and you re-figure this out. Because if you put that fee in place, you mark my words, you're going to have people lined up at the podium, more so than the people who already gave me an earful. But the best part about it is that when they tag me about social media, I'm just going to tell them, "Call the new mayor." So, but that is going to be an issue, just in my personal opinion. Is there one city in Seminole County that does this? Because I have to be frank, I don't remember hearing any.
Neighboring community, but not Seminole County.
Well, there you go. Orange County?
Winter Park.
Winter Park.
Winter Park.
City of Lakeland.
It's Winter Park. Have you ever seen Winter Park utility bills? Everybody complains about the Oviedo utility bills, folks. All I have to tell you is you go live in the city of Winter Park, where you get your electric, your water, your garbage, everything on one bill, and the bill comes at the end of the month for $600 or $700 bucks. Yeah, that'll break your heart when that one shows up. But that's just personally for me. I'm going to go back around the table, see what everybody else thinks. Then we're going to move on to the next presentation. Why don't we go backwards? We'll start with Bob. Chief?
All right. Well, you know, I, I looked at this when it came on the agenda, and I actually, I dug into it because I was doing the math and seeing how it worked.
You were actually the only one who dug into it. That's, give props to Bob, because when I sent the email, I was told that Bob was the only one who had questions. So we will give him props.
So, but, but anyways, when I went through it, to me, I thought this was, you know, that Parks and Recs, you know, found a creative way to, to, you know, tackle the issue of the increased costs. And, and there's a lot of different, not just with cities, but there's a lot of places that you go and businesses that you go to where you can choose. Like, if you're going to frequent them a lot and use the facilities a lot, or whatever, whatever the business is, then you can choose to have a, you know, choose a membership. And this was just another way of doing that. And, and I think that, you know, I think I'm okay with this, and, you know, and we'll see how it goes. I mean, if everybody lines up at the podium, then we may have to reassess it. But I, I, I think right now, I think that this is, you know, something that we should try. And, and I think there's a lot of misconception out there that this is a mandatory fee. You know, I think we've all, we all did receive some emails on it and stuff, and people keep thinking that it's like a mandatory fee. They think it's like another street, like district or something, but, but it's not. And it's just a different way for people to do that analysis on whether they want to have a membership and pay a reduced fee, or, or, you know, if they're only going to be in one program or swim a couple of times or something like that, then, then it doesn't make sense for them. So, but that's my, my two cents.
I kind of see both sides of this. I understand where the mayor's coming from. If you include, if the cost recovery is inside the increased fees, or the people that are paying with credit cards pay, it's kind of like going to the gas station where they have the price listed up there. This is the price with credit card. There's a price with, with cash. But I also understand, like, in some respects, I agree with the deputy mayor, that it's something to try. It's a little different for us. But my concern is that your goal with people not getting that percentage that you want to be on the membership is going to have a negative effect. So I kind of see both ways. Is it worth a shot? Maybe, but I also agree that there's going to be a lot of feedback on it.
Chief?
Well, we, we right now maintain a 30% cost recovery. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So when will we know if this is equivalent or better? Will we know this time next year?
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's, it's like we've talked about, we're no, in my opinion, we're no in six months how the program's going, if people are buying the membership or if they're paying, if they're not purchasing the membership and they're just paying directly for the program fees. But it's like Jerry and I have discussed in, in length. It's, this is going to take about a year to know where we're at as far as membership fees, to see if that's actually working or not. You know, and it's one of these things, and it's what we've tossed around. This, I can't project everything. I think that this will, and I, I'm, you know, sitting here and tell you, because staff had the same discussions. We know, that's why we're already ahead. We've got a flyer that's educational that we will put out. We know that there's going to be questions. We know that there's going to be people who will, you know, are going to point out last year's fees compared to this year's fees, and that there's actually no savings. What, what our place to do is educate people, staff's place to do is educate people based on the new fee schedule and the cost savings if you purchase the membership fee. And then each individual will have a choice. But I truly believe, six months into this, to answer your question, Mr. Britton, I think six months in, we'll have a good idea if it's working.
Okay. Why don't we do, kind of like what we did with the golf course? Come back in six months, give us a report. Come back in 12 months, give us a report, and we'll see how it trends out. You know, I'm not saying a go-no-go after a year. Let's give it a couple of years and see what the trends are.
Mayor?
Yes?
I could add one thing. If your staff is going to do the math with people coming in to see if they're going to save or not, just one precaution is they better be right.
Oh, yes.
Because if they're not right, and the savings is less or it costs somebody's more.
They, we will hear that.
You will, you will hear extremely on that one.
I understand.
And Drew, I just want to point out to everybody who's here and maybe listening at home that the 30% is the minimum goal. I mean, if you bring in 32, 33, or 34, that's just, that's a bonus.
Yes.
Right. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. We don't stop at 30 and then just start refunding money.
And it's like one of the things I remind Mr. Cobb several times and Jerry, as we go through the budget. Several of our programs bring in more than 30%.
Right.
It's when you bring in all the, the total budget costs, operating costs, that's what lowers our cost recovery within the wrecking park.
Well, and it's like all the events you put on, the minimum cost recovery aggregate is 50%, right? You have some events that do extremely well. You have some events that the community loves that don't do as well. But at the end of the day, 50% or higher is what the policy is.
Give you an example, our program event this past weekend for Oktoberfest, without final numbers, as of Saturday night, we were about 103% cost recovery.
That's pretty good. That's a lot of beer.
That was a lot of beer.
Oviedo loves their beer. We know that. Bob, how much beer did you have?
I can't say.
I will say that that Black Forest beer that they have is always my favorite.
Yes, that was really good beer.
All righty. Well, we have another presentation. Any more questions, gentlemen? Nope. We'll take a five-minute recess and we'll switch everybody up. Thank you. Oh, I just should note for the record that Councilman Henkin is not here this evening. I don't think I mentioned that when I opened everything up.
Steve looks different.
Steve looks different tonight.
Looks younger and more dapper.
Yeah, younger and more dapper. We're good? All righty, guys. We're going to come back to order. We're going to move on to what was the first item on our agenda. It's now the second item on our agenda. That is the State Road 434 corridor planning study. I'm going to briefly turn it over to Mr. Cobb for an introduction. Then, Mr. Cobb, we have Commissioner Bob Delary here with us this evening. Bob, we appreciate you coming down.
My pleasure, Mayor.
And explaining this all to us. We have representatives from Kittleson, who will also help us out and work through this. So I'm going to assume at some point, we'll just turn it over to them.
Actually, Mayor, you just, you basically said everything that I was going to say, that the county has engaged Kittleson and Associates to conduct this planning study. And tonight, we're here for council to review their findings and their recommended short-term improvements. And I would like to turn it over to them and let them make their presentation.
Gentlemen?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say thank you, allowing us to present here today. For the record, my name is Bob Delary. I'm one of your county commissioners here in Seminole County. And I also want to thank you for allowing us to present here today. Last week, we did present to the city of Buena Springs. And at the other presentation, it was at their formal meeting, they did vote in favor of the resolution of passing in support of what we're presenting here today. We do understand that this is a work session for you. You can't take official, official action, but... There's been many years of hard work on this. We all know that something needs to be done. All you have to do is listen to the residents, and hopefully something will be done soon. This is truly, I believe, the right thing at the right time. Going to be very brief, history. We did have a kickoff meeting several months ago, last year, I believe it was, over by the church in Winter Springs. There was beginning of the first phase of what we call the PDNE, the Plan and Development Engineering. In order to spend federal money, we have to go through a very strict process, and I believe that process was warranted. With that, we did look at what would it take to four-lane 434 in this section. You're going to hear the consultants talk about what it would take, and right away, the engineers, as they got deeper into this project, determined that the criteria from the federal government actually changed over the past couple of years, and causing this project to get pushed out even more. We don't want to wait the amount of time that it would take, so we believe this is really the first phase. The engineers are able to address, I think, the concerns of the community. I would like to ask everyone to keep their comments, or their questions, to the end of the presentation, because you'll see here tonight that as you go through this deck of presentations, a lot of your questions would potentially be addressed. Because of the project and the changing of the state, we had to reclassify this project, and this project is now reclassified as a complete-street project. It is not a road widening project. And with complete streets, we're looking at cross-access, we're looking at community interconnectivity, we're looking at trails, we're looking at how people access the road as well as move on a longitudinal type of approach. The Board of County Commissioners did have a work session regarding this, and we agreed that this is the right approach. We wanted to reach out to the two cities that are involved, Oviedo and Winter Springs, get their input before we take official action. It is your city. We would not want to tell you what to do with your city roads, and how your city needs to grow. And that's why we want to make sure that the two cities understand what the issues are, and that if any questions they have will be addressed, not just tonight, but in the future. And after the questions are addressed, we hope to move forward. Tonight, we have Kittleson and Associates with us, Ryan Cunningham. Kittleson and Associates is one of the national leading experts of roundabouts. When it comes to roundabouts, the Department of Transportation of the state of Florida goes to this firm. This is the firm that reviews most of the roundabouts in the state of Florida, and they actually hold presentations nationally on how to do it right. We also have John Dredge with us in the audience. He is the county engineer, also the public works director. Before I turn it over to Kittleson, I just want to make sure that everyone realizes that all questions be addressed at the end, so if you could hold your questions to the end, I greatly appreciate it. At this time, Ryan, take it away.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me tonight, and I look forward to presenting the project to you. So, what I'd like to do is start with the corridor planning study. We started, as Commissioner mentioned, just with the, the big, long-term projects in mind, and then I'd like to move into what's going to happen in the short term in each of those sections. Good. So the, where we are in the process with the planning study, we've highlighted here, and as Commissioner Delary mentioned, kind of right before the PDNE would occur, some of the things that we've accomplished in the corridor planning study was that we've separated and defined what we call Section 1 and Section 2 separately and independently from each other. So, if we could look at the next slide. The, the overall corridor limits go from 417, you kind of have to orient yourself, north is to the right, 417, all the way down to Mitchell Hammock Road. We define these separately as Section 1, which kind of stops at Franklin Street, and then picks back up at Smith Street with Section 2. The reason that we skipped this section in between is that section, when we started the project, was under construction, it's now completed, with a intersection improvement that basically widens 434 out to two lanes in each direction on approach to the 426 intersection. And we know that's part of preparing for the 426 widening that's coming in. So, as, as part of the planning study, one of the things we wanted to do was to be able to differentiate and separate those two sections, because in the federal process, it's currently all one project. And so if you were going to move forward with the PDNE, you'd have to do the entire roadway section. And there's some, there's different needs, and there's different things in each of those sections that might hold up the other. So we wanted to be able to separate those and, and move independently. In the existing conditions analysis, and we went through in great detail on this in our public meeting that we held last October, we, we looked at the existing ADT, average annual daily traffic out there. The section with the greatest traffic volume is 24,000 between 417 and the curve at Hammock Lane. You can see that that kind of drops down to 19,600 south of Hammock Lane, down to Franklin Street, and then down on Section 2, it, it drops even further, down to 16,200. So, in the existing condition, all of Section 1 is basically operating at level Service F, so it's failing in terms of just how much traffic is served there versus what the capacity of the roadway is. And then down in Section 2, 16,200 equates to level Service C. So even just based on how those two sections are operating quite a bit differently, we can see that Section 1 is really a priority for what, what needs to happen. So, beyond roadway capacity, we did look at, you know, what are the needs kind of holistically or comprehensively of the corridor? So again, looking at just Section 1, we looked at, we tried to look at these from what, who are the roadway users, and what are their needs? So, the motorists who are out there, obviously, they need more roadway capacity. We also heard from residents who live in the area, safe access to and from their residential driveways, or the unsignaled intersections in the area was a really big need. If, if you've tried to come out of any of those residences in the morning particularly, it's very hard to come out and turn left out of the Oviedo neighborhoods. And then safe school bus loading and unloading is something that we heard a lot about as well. So there's school buses that go in, in both directions on that section, they stop in four different areas, and because it's an undivided road, they stop traffic on both sides of the road, and so that just takes what's already kind of a congested scenario and really blows it up and makes it much worse. And then we also looked at bicyclists and pedestrians. So in terms of, you know, bicyclists, there's a pretty narrow bike lane out there, not very comfortable for riding on, most people, kind of the typical bicyclist would not want to do that, especially the family bicyclist. So we want to provide a safe and continuous bicycle facility, and also be able to access between the uses along the section. So, there's not a lot of places to cross 434 between 417 and Hammock Lane. So we wanted to just create more permeability on the corridor. In terms of pedestrians, there's a lot of sidewalk gaps out there. So a lot of developments that have been built have sidewalks right in front of them, but there's gaps, you know, all in between. And so, that's one of the reasons that school buses stop at multiple places, but we wanted to make sure we were creating a safe and continuous pedestrian facility there. Short-term, we looked at some potential for network connections that could just reduce some of the demand on 434. So, part of the reason that 434 is so congested is because all these green roadways represent neighborhoods or developments where people have to load directly onto 434, they have no other choice. If they're going to leave their home or their business, they have to go to 434. So these red lines, one that connects Palm Drive and Pine Avenue, one at Newcastle Street connecting to Artesia, and then one, Division Street, up to Florida Avenue. These are three potential connections that could basically quadruple the amount of access north and south along this area that doesn't have to rely on 434. This is not part of our project, but it's something that we identified as part of our study, because we saw it as kind of some low-hanging fruit in some, in some conditions. The long-term solution that we identified as part of the corridor planning study was a four-lane divided roadway. So we looked at four different alternatives, but two of them really rose to the top in terms of just meeting all of the needs that I, that I mentioned earlier of the corridor users. So alternative 1, on the left here, is a four-lane divided road. It includes buffered bicycle lanes, which is a seven-foot bicycle lane with a, a buffer in between the, the travelway and the bicyclist lane, and then also a sidewalk on one side, and a shared-use path on the other side. So, that combination of bicycle lane and shared-use path kind of covers the whole gamut of, you know, the bicycle rider, and, you know, where they're more comfortable riding. This obviously has a pretty substantial right-of-way impact, so alternative 3 is a lower-impact alternative, so it's a four-lane divided roadway with a sidewalk on one side and a shared-use path on the other. So we basically trade out the bicycle lane, so we save about 14 feet of right-of-way doing that. And we are actually looking to reduce the posted speed here from what's currently 45 to 40 miles per hour, and try to get something that's a little more appropriate for that residential context, and make it more comfortable for people who are walking and biking along the roadway, but still getting you through, through the corridor at a reasonable rate. So I mentioned the impacts of the four-lane widening. This, we're coming out to between 110 to 120 feet of right-of-way that would be needed for those two alternatives. As you can see, we only have 50 feet of right-of-way in this aqua section around McAvon Dash and down here to Artesia Street. So, you know, one of the messages from the corridor planning study is, if we're going to go forward with this long-term project, there's going to be substantial right-of-way impacts. There were a few homes and a few businesses that we'd identified that would be impacted by a widening project in the long term. In Section 2, again, being able to separate these and look at them separately, we identified the needs in Section 2 separately. So, while roadway capacity wasn't a problem today, we did see it kind of hitting that capacity in the future, we looked at a 20-year horizon. We saw the intersection operations at Mitchell Hammock Road, that traffic signal to be extremely important to what happens on the corridor north of it. And then road safety was, was something that stood out here. We had a lot of rear-end accidents in this, in this segment. As you may recall, if you know the roadway, there's no left-turn lanes on this segment, and so you have all these, you know, driveways or minor intersections, and anytime somebody wants to stop to turn left, there's potential they could get rear-ended. We also wanted to improve our facilities for bicyclists. There's not a very good bicycle facility out there today, but there is a trail crossing right there at Smith Street, and we want to make sure that people who live in this area have access to that trail crossing, and also to be able to cross the street, so if people wanted to get over to Oviedo on the park from the west side of 434, you know, to have a couple of good options for them to cross 434 in that area. And the same thing for pedestrians. We do have sidewalk on both sides of the street throughout Section 2, but in a lot of cases, it's right up on the curb. If you do have a lot of traffic on the roadway, it's not as comfortable as a walk for those people, and then crossing the street becomes an issue in the area of Boardwalk and fire station. Again, we had identified some potential network connections down there that would just take some of the demand off of 434. The red line and the two dark-green lines are existing gaps that we'd identified. The two dark-green lines are actually improvements that City of Oviedo is already working on making happen, so those are the Oak Street and Wood Street extensions. So that's really great to see those things, those two projects moving forward and making that connectivity not just between that neighborhood, but also connecting it to the network to the east that's Oviedo on the park. So, the long-term solution for this one, we looked at a set of three-lane scenarios and two four-lane scenarios as well. So the tra, the projected traffic in the future is kind of at that threshold, where if you do things properly, a three-lane section would actually serve the traffic, as long as you can take care of the traffic signals on the north and south side of the corridor. So, we were able to identify improvements to those traffic signals to, to make those work in the future, to keep those working in the future. And so we, we have these two three-lane scenarios. Alternative 1 is, you know, one lane in each direction divided by a two-way left-turn lane, or, or a set of turn lanes, and then you would have a buffered bike lane and six-foot sidewalks on either side. Alternative 2, trying to just really skinny down that impact a little bit, is removing that buffered bike lane and building a shared-use path on one side. And you can see the proposed right-of-way for alternative 2 is 66 feet, and alternative 1 is 73 feet. If you're, if you recall, this area has much more, a tighter envelope in terms of where the buildings are, whether the homes and the businesses, right kind of up on the edge of this corridor. So, as I mentioned, alternative 3 had a 66-foot right-of-way envelope, and you can see we have somewhere between 60 and 66 feet typical right-of-way availability in Section 2. So that, that alternative would really help kind of minimize the impacts as opposed to alternative 1, or to a four-lane widening project. So, we had reached kind of the end of our corridor planning study. We'd come up with these set of alternatives. We were anticipating pushing those into a PD, a formal PDNE study, or a set of PDNE studies. And at that time, we were discussing our approach to the public meeting. We found that Metroplan's priority list had changed about a month before, or a couple of months before. Commissioner Delary mentioned the federal mandated performance planning measurement, performance-based planning. Performance measures had been applied to our list and taken our project from somewhere around number 20 down to like number 50. And so the anticipated construction funding was not going to be available when we needed it to be available at the end of that PDNE study and design. So the county kind of picked up and, and immediately just said, we need to focus on a short-term, high-impact project. If, if we can't deliver this project when we thought we would, we need to come up with a different project that we can deliver in the short term that's going to really have an impact. And so that's what we started to do in Section 1. I want to do, I want to go ahead and mention, in Section 2, there were a few short-term projects, go ahead to the next one. Yeah. A few short-term projects that are kind of already in the, in the works in Section 2 regarding the safety needs on the corridor. There's a pedestrian crosswalk being considered by FDOT near Boardwalk Avenue. So if you know, there's a fire station down there, there's an emergency signal, and so FDOT's looking at an opportunity to create a pedestrian crosswalk there, which would be protected, and would allow people to get, you know, a little more access between Boston Hill Park on the west side of the road, and Oviedo on the park on the east side. FDOT's reducing the posted speed out there, they may have already done that. I know it was in the works from 45 down to 35 miles per hour, so we think that should help with that permeability that I mentioned, but also with some of the rear-end crashes that we're seeing. Intersection operations, a second westbound left-turn lane is already being added to Mitchell Hammock Road, so I think you all, that's a City of Oviedo project, you all know about that. So that should add...
County, I think.
Quite a bit of capacity.
It's actually a county project. We funded it, we gave it to the city. We're not looking for money.
Excellent.
We're not even looking for membership. Sorry, Drew.
My mistake. And then, I mentioned the network connections at Wood Street and Oak Street.
Wait, if Drew signed yet for a membership, he might save some money on it, so I wouldn't be so quick to just turn him down.
You go to the next one. Sorry. No, no problem.
All right, Mayor.
So, when we were tasked with developing a short-term project for Section 1, knowing that that long-term project is more long-term than we really wanted it to be, we went back to the drawing table, but we started with the needs that we had identified as part of the corridor planning study. Just because the funding changed doesn't mean that the needs of the corridor changed. So we started with the motorists' needs that are listed here, the bicyclist's needs, the pedestrian needs. We wanted to identify some short-term project that could address all these needs in the short term, something that could be funded with available funding, which is, there's a complete-street set of funding at Metroplano-Lando, and then also something that we could build in the next four to five years. So the project elements that we went to that would, that would kind of fit the bill and are constructible are a set of roundabouts, access management on... Mitchell Hammock Road. So I think you all, that's a City of Oviedo project, you all know about that. So that should add quite a bit of capacity.
County, I think.
It's actually a county project. We funded it, we gave it to the city. We're not looking for money.
Excellent.
We're not even looking for membership. Sorry, Drew.
My mistake. And then I mentioned the network connections at Wood Street and Oak Street.
Wait, if Drew signed yet for a membership, he might save some money on it. So I wouldn't be so quick to just turn him down.
You go to the next one? Sorry. No, no problem. So when we were tasked with developing a short-term project for Section 1, knowing that that long-term project is more long-term than we really wanted it to be, we went back to the drawing table, but we started with the needs that we had identified as part of the corridor planning study. Just because the funding changed doesn't mean that the needs of the corridor changed. So we started with the motorists' needs listed here, the bicyclist's needs, the pedestrian needs. We wanted to identify some short-term project that could address all these needs in the short term, something that could be funded with available funding, which is, there's a complete streets set of funding at Metro Plan Orlando, and then also something that we could build in the next four to five years. So the project elements that we went to that would kind of fit the bill and are constructable are a set of roundabouts, access management on the roadway between McTavendash and Hammock Lane, speed management. So I mentioned before that we wanted to bring that speed from 45 down to 40. We still intend to do that. Providing sidewalk connections and a shared-use path to improve that pedestrian bicycle connection. So this shows on the map where that project is really focused. So the green lines here represent the shared-use path. We're proposing a shared-use path from McTavendash down to Artesia on the south side, but as part of our development, we decided, let's go ahead and push this all the way out west to the trailhead on the west side of 417. So now we have a shared-use path connection that would allow anybody who lives in Oviedo on this corridor, a direct connection to that trailhead via a shared-use path. And then on the north side, we're also incorporating that shared-use path between McTavendash and Hammock Lane. So people who live on the Winter Springs side, they'll have a shared-use path in front of their development. They can cross the street at one of the roundabouts and get all the way down to the trailhead. So the roundabout locations I mentioned earlier, McTavendash, Hammock Lane, and Artesia Street. So these are three intersections on this corridor that are currently failing. The McTavendash approach, the Artesia Street approach in the AM and PM peak hours are having substantial issues, you know, with that stop control. Hammock Lane was converted to a traffic signal a couple of years ago, and in the morning, that northbound bats all the way up and past Artesia Street. So it's with that single lane in each direction, it just does not have enough capacity to serve the traffic that's there, much less projected growth.
Lighting, talking about the light.
Oh, yeah. So there, yeah, back, sorry. The typical section for this is shown in the bottom left, and you can see along the shared-use path sections, we'll have roadway lighting, LED lighting. We'll also have, all the roundabouts themselves will be lit. And so it'll have intersection lighting, which will also focus on the crosswalks as well. So you have a lot of just safe traveling for pedestrians and bicyclists as they're going through here. So I wanted to give you just a quick look at the concepts for the roundabouts. So in McTavendash, if you recall, the traffic volumes were a lot higher on that section between 417 and Hammock Lane. And so what we had to do to serve existing traffic, but also future traffic, is to actually do a partial two-lane roundabout. So as you're approaching the roundabout on 434, it breaks out into a two-lane approach. You can see how that happens. Then it allows you to go through the roundabout in two lanes, side by side, and then that does like a zipper merge back in as you leave the roundabout. So this happens in both directions, and that actually greatly increases the capacity of the roundabout. It'll actually allow this roundabout to work, not just when we open it in a few years, but also in 2045, which was our design year volume.
So these are not throwaway projects.
Right. And if the widening, funding for the widening does come through, they can, you don't have to rebuild the roundabout. It can fit into the roundabout that we're proposing here. So the next one would be to replace the signal at Hammock Lane with a partial two-lane roundabout. So you can see again, we're taking that approach where 434 gets dual-lane approaches as it comes up to the roundabout. And then we've also included a separate left and right turn lane at Hammock Lane. If you're familiar with that intersection, in the morning particularly, there's a really high number of southbound right turns coming out of that area and going west on 434. So this would allow that to operate really smoothly, not just today, but in the future. So even 2045 operations at this roundabout would work better than the signal does today.
Right, stay right there. One thing they're not doing presently, because we're not there yet, we're not addressing the stormwater, we're not actually seeing the trail actually approaching the stormwater, that's going to be addressed during the actual engine.
Yeah. We've identified two pond locations that we think are needed for this project. And then Artesia Street, the traffic volumes do drop as you go past Hammock Lane and south on the north-south section of 434. What that did was allow us to design and model Artesia Street as a single-lane roundabout. So you don't have that dual-lane approach coming and going on 434, and that allowed us to actually put this roundabout in the existing space without having substantial impacts to right-of-way. So we were concerned because you have built properties on three corners there. We just wanted to make sure that we didn't significantly impact those properties or those structures. And so this fits in really nicely with a single-lane approach, and it also serves the traffic through 2045. So when we got through kind of our analysis on this and we were really reassessing the needs versus what we were proposing, we saw that the short-term project really checks all the boxes in terms of the needs that we had identified earlier in the corridor planning study. And in some way, I think we're getting a project that meets all of our needs a lot sooner for a lot less money and a lot less property impacts than we otherwise would have had with that long-term project. So the short-term project schedule, we're looking to, we're really just wrapping up our project development right now. We had a meeting with FDOT management earlier today. Commissioner Delary mentioned that Winter Springs expressed their support for the project last week. FDOT is, has been a partner this entire time and expressed their support again today at the management level. We're looking to begin design next year, so it could, design funds would basically be available next summer. And the county's working on putting together an RFP to line up a consultant to do that. And then right-of-way and construction funds would then follow, you know, two years to four years after that. So come five years from now, we could begin, we anticipate beginning construction on the short-term project.
The good news, Mayor, is we're not looking for funds from the City of Oviedo or from the City of Winter Springs. Metro Plan Orlando is actually funding, I believe, $1.5 million for design.
$1.6.
$1.6, I'm sorry, rounding numbers. They're also allocated $5 million for construction and $3 to $4 million for right-of-way. And that's what's been, Commissioner Zimbrow and I have been working on. And that's all set up. After we get the two cities on board, your city on board, as well as the Board of County Commissioners, we will be meeting with the school board to talk about school bus locations, but as well as our state reps, we don't want to meet with them until we have everyone on board.
And so in terms of next steps for this project, we are, you know, looking for the support of the local governments. FDOT has made that very clear, that it's important to them before they move into design, that they know that both cities and the county support the project. So we presented this to Seminole County on the 27th of August, Winter Springs last week, and then, as I mentioned, FDOT management meeting and to you all today. So we're currently setting the date for the public meeting as well, where we would send out flyers and notifications and have just the general public come see a presentation like this and be able to ask questions. And we're looking to do that probably the last week of October, if we can get that done. The project's application process is currently being reviewed. It's called a 4P application by FDOT, and so that's in process, and we're just really gearing up, preparing for the design phase.
Just a minute, Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to you to ask a question.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll start with council members, who would like to go first. Start with you, Keith, and I'll work my way back.
Well, it's a little disappointing. We've been waiting 20 years for the floor lining to go on, but I'm not going to dwell on that. I think we've got to do something. We've got to support this. First question is, is the roundabouts are actually going to increase the capacity of the road just by putting the roundabouts in?
Because we can do the partial two-lane roundabouts, they increase the capacity of the roadway. So with the traffic signal, we wouldn't be able to just widen out the two lanes, put them through a signal, and then take them back down. We would have some issues with that, but the roundabouts were designed to do that well.
Okay. And I'll tell you, I just got back from California. They use two-lane roundabouts all over the place out there. I've been through it, and they work well. I'd be a little concerned about pedestrians walking across one of those things. Are there going to be any plans for crossovers?
Can we go back to the roundabout slide, one of them?
Maybe McTavendash.
Keep going. It's McTavendash, either this one or McTavendash.
Yeah. This is a good one. Yeah, so each crossing would be two lanes, where you're just looking in a single direction. And really, what's, the way that it's set up is, you know, that kind of, I think you used the word exaggerated last week, that exaggerated curve that happens on entering the roundabout forces the vehicle to slow down and yield at that point. So the crosswalks are placed, one vehicle behind that yield point, so that a vehicle can come and then a gap can be left for pedestrians to cross. Now, when you have a two-lane crossing like this, you'll also support that with a rectangular rapid-flashing beacon. So it would be one of those, you know, flashers that the pedestrian will go up, push the button, it'll start, it'll kind of grab the attention of the vehicle that's coming up.
Ryan, that's actually located in the old downtown of Oviedo where the trail crossing is.
Yes. The one they have, the trail crossing, would be on each of these approaches. And as I mentioned, they'd all be lit as well, so.
So would there be a plan? I'm thinking more along the lines of the Section 2 to get across 434 into Oviedo on the Park, an overhead crossover. Any plans for that?
Not that I've heard of. I know FDOT is looking at a, using the emergency signal to implement a pedestrian crossing with, you know, signalized protection. But, yeah, I've not heard of any bridges being constructed.
Ryan, would you meet with our staff? I know you're a consultant to us, but actually work with our staff and DOT to figure out what they're doing and report back to this council so they know ahead of time of what exactly is happening?
So I have vision in my head what's out there now, both at McTavendash and down closer to Mitchell Hammock. And it's, it would be a nightmare crossing that. I think this would be better, but there's a lot of cars going down that road, and a pedestrian, I think, would still have a hard time. I understand this. I can just see 500 cars coming through there and trying to get through that safely without the cars getting rear-ended too, like you mentioned.
Right. Well, and so we'd be introducing curb and gutter on this roadway as well, and with the access management in this piece, you'd have curb and gutter on both sides. It's really going to help control that speed. So right now, it kind of feels wide open, and if there's not congestion, you can fly. It's not going to, it's going to feel more enclosed in a way that makes you just want to drive a little bit more carefully.
Commissioner, you said that Metro Plan has money for the right-of-way to start right-of-way purchase?
We have $1.6 million allocated for design. We have $5 million allocated for construction, and I believe it's $3 to $4 million allocated for right-of-way once the design is done. It's not allocated today.
Okay. So there's no way to fast-track this?
We are fast-tracking.
That is fast-tracking.
This is fast-tracking?
Yeah. In Metro Plan speak, this is, this is like lightning speed.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
This is warp speed.
Okay. I was just hoping maybe we could do some things in parallel.
We're going to try to do that. I had the commitment from our county staff, John Dredge, they're trying to do the best they can.
There is a requirement for right-of-way. It has to, you have to reach 60% design plans before you can start that process, so you know you're buying the right property.
I can't buy, we cannot buy someone's property unless they, as Ryan said, you're 60% into the design, so they know that it's, you're asking for the right amount of property in the right location.
Okay.
That's the issue with taking right-of, or buying right-of-way.
Okay. And did I hear you correctly that improving the connectivity with Pine-Palm, Newcastle and Division is quadruples?
So what I meant by quadrupling is that there's currently one lane in each direction, north and south, to get between, say, downtown of Oviedo and 417 interchange. If you allow that connection between Palm and Pine and the one in McKinley's Mill and the other one, you've gone from one lane in each direction to four opportunities to do that, four lanes.
I'm not going to open that can of worms, because those battles have been fought and we've all got scars from them, but that's an interesting observation.
And we did a modeling exercise a few years ago on that, and just that connection alone that you mentioned would, could reduce the demand on 434 by 10%. So.
I believe you also have other issues of accessing on the 434. That is not a requirement of this project.
Correct.
Okay. And I just, you know, going back to the single lane, you know, that's what we're working here. I lived in Boston for a while when they were putting the big dig in, and a lot of those access roads up there are single-lane, and they work, they work pretty well.
There's a engineering philosophy that has been told us at Metro Plan, to go fast, slow. And it's a theory that the engineers actually look at. As long as you keep the speed constant, at a lowest speed, you can go faster.
You don't get that springboard effect, yeah?
Correct.
That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you.
Again, you know, I would like to see the four lanes all the way. However, you did answer in your presentation a couple of my questions dealing with, are the, these are going to stay if and when it gets four-lane, these roundabouts are staying? It's not a spend money now to rip it out later?
They're not throwaway projects.
Okay. I heard you say that, and I'm glad to hear that. Secondly, my concern with the two-lane right-of-ways and like, I'm concerned, they work great in California, but I know some of the issues we have at the other roundabout in the city. This is a new concept?
I always have to call you Chief, I know you're a city council member, I'm sorry.
Bob, I've been doing it for a year and a half. It just, it doesn't work.
And, Brian, you could explain a bit, and I can. The difference of the traffic services is it's actually a forced turn here.
Right.
And that's what's going to, that makes all the difference on the roundabouts, is that forced turn. Correct, Ryan?
Correct, yeah. There's several design elements that we incorporate in what we distinguish as modern roundabouts as opposed to load reeds and things like that that you might see like in New Jersey. I think the one, the other one that you have in the city is, it's a little bit tight and it has five legs, and so that's one of the things that gets confusing about it. But these are, these are designed in accordance with all those design principles, and Commissioner Delary's mentioning that we have a national expertise in it. Our company actually wrote the design manual for roundabouts that Thorough Highway uses. So we had, one of the co-authors of that is in my office, and I had him look at these and make sure this is, you know, what we want to propose. We're seeing a lot more come into, FDOT has put roundabouts kind of on their list of, we want to build more of these, not just because of their operational enhancements, but because of their safety enhancements. So they significantly reduce injury and fatal crashes, and I think that's going to help with, what we hear is that, you know, people in Florida don't, aren't used to roundabouts, so they have a hard time, you know, they need education, they're having a hard time driving them. But they will see many more of them all over state roads in Florida.
And I don't disagree with you at all, because when you start putting stoplights there, people will speed up to hit the lights, and that's when you have the red light crashes, and that's where you have the rear-end crashes, and someone comes to a halt and stop when the light turns yellow. So the roundabouts, and I agree that lowering the speed and flowing the traffic makes for faster traffic. So I like the designs. I wish the timetable was a little quicker, but I do understand how that works.
And Chief, keep in mind that the end of 2020, there's going to be major construction here of 426 and 419 through Oviedo High School all the way to Jackson Heights.
And I just can't wait for that to start.
Neither can we.
It's, is, and I know we're ways off from the implementation, because we've got design, but I can foresee issues during construction with traffic.
Yep.
So is there, hopefully there's ways to mitigate some of that during the construction time.
Yeah, in the design phase, they'll put together MOT, maintenance of traffic plans, to figure out how to make all this work while keeping those lines open.
Now, just to defend Ryan on this, he has not had the contract yet to do the actual engineering. That is going to go out to bid.
Right.
And that engineering firm will be involved in that.
Well, it's always a concern when you have major, major construction, that you get that disruption before it gets better. And if there's some ways to mitigate that, like I said, it's down the road, but if there's some ways to mitigate that during that time, it just makes everybody's life easier.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Deputy Mayor?
Couple of things. The, so these are the only three roundabouts, right, on the, on that?
Correct.
Whole leg, okay. On the, I think it's the next slide, the 434 Hammock Lane one, you're showing four lanes going in and four lanes coming out. How far is that four lane going to stretch?
So on the south side, there's a left-turn lane at Laurel Oaks. It'll actually, we've discussed with FDOT whether we want to bring that into a single lane prior to the development of that left-turn lane, or just allow that second lane to drop into the left-turn lane. So, but it'll, it'll end by or before the Ellington Laurel Oaks intersection. And then west of here, basically just off the map, is where that taper starts to begin back down.
So you're going to taper it off and then open it back up when you get to McKinley's Mill?
Correct.
And then close it back after that?
Yeah. And what I didn't, what I don't have on here, but is providing the concept plans, is there's going to be a set of directional median openings. going to be a set of directional median openings at Calypso and Cranston. So you would be able to turn left into either of those streets, or if you lived just upstream of those, you'd be able to make your U-turn at that location, you wouldn't have to go all the way to the roundabout.
Deputy Mayor?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that one time? Cranston is baring in, Calypso is the townhomes.
Can we go to the overall map, maybe that one?
Yeah. There you go. Yeah.
Those are the Winter Springs neighborhood?
One's on Oviedo side, one's on Winter Springs side.
Oh, Calypso is Heather, the other one, right? That's right. That's the, yeah, yeah.
Do you drop this, or up here, do you make a drop of this?
Okay. Now, what are you doing? Well, I guess the townhomes are going to be left in, and then they'll just be right out around the rotary, because they're right next to it, or.
Correct, yeah. So if you, if you're forced to make a right out, then you can use the U-turn, you can use the roundabout to U-turn.
Roundabout, excuse me, not the rotary. I'm sorry.
And Deputy Mayor, because of the requirements from the feds, we cannot do a road widening project. We have to do a complete street project. We're just trying to do as much as we can.
All right. So, because I can understand the flow of traffic increasing with the Hammock Lane roundabout. I know that there's issues at Artesia, we had a pretty bad accident there a few years back, and we have been there a lot, actually. And then McKinley's Mill as well. But I just want to make sure that those two roundabouts aren't going to impede the flow of traffic that we're currently, because we're trying to get as much traffic.
Right.
Up and out to the 417, basically, and Hammock Lane will do that, because you won't have that stoplight there anymore. But the other two, I mean, do you have the flow on those to make sure they're not going to actually cause upstream congestion?
Yeah, so we've looked at, we looked at the queuing as well as the delay. So just in terms of delay, I think, you know, when you go through McTavendash today, because there's no, there's no stop control or anything like that, you have, you have no delay.
Right.
But in the future with the roundabout, you're talking about like less than 10 seconds of delay, on average. And so some people will have, you know, they'll come up and they won't have to stop at all. They'll just be slowing down a little bit and passing through. Some people might, you know, there might be a three-car queue, and it'll take you 15 seconds to get through, but, and that's in the peak hour, right? So when it's not busy out there, you're not going to see any delay there. You're going to see the roundabouts serve that function of slowing traffic down when it's not busy, and they'll increase that capacity when it is busy.
Ryan, I think one thing that the roundabouts will do that you don't have now is that it's going to make it better for those that are entering from Artesia, entering from McTavendash.
Yes, absolutely.
It'll make, it'll make 434 much easier for them to access, because they're not turning left anymore. Now they're making a right turn, and they're going around the roundabout, they want to head west, or they're flowing into traffic heading east.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's probably going to be the biggest benefit at those intersections, is that it's going to make it better for the side streets to actually access the 434 facility.
And normally looking at traffic from one direction.
True.
You're not looking at traffic from two directions.
And the, the Artesia circle, is that going to be as tight as the Franklin Street circle that we, that we currently have?
I haven't put them up against each other, but I don't, I think it's going to be a little bit smoother to go through, I'd say it that way.
All right. Now, I'm, I think that this project, I mean, is much needed. Like everybody else said, the four-laning would be ideal, but we understand where that's at. Now, I, I think that this will hopefully, you know, at least allow access from Artesia and McKinley's Mill and speed up traffic at Hammock Lane.
Deputy Mayor, there's also a comparison that I'm going to ask staff to send to the city that shows you how the intersection works today, how the intersection will work with a traffic light, as well as a roundabout today, as well as in the future, and you'll see a significant improvement in both situations with the traffic circle.
Mm-hmm.
So I'll make sure that you get that.
All right. Perfect.
Anything else?
Well, Commissioner, as you said, this has been a long struggle. Many years ago, actually, when you sat with us, we had to make a decision, was it east-west or north-south? And obviously, east-west was our most pressing need at the time, and now we have to tackle north and south. Unfortunately, with the changes at Metro Plan, I watched that project go from, like you said, it was in the middle there, 20, it was towards the top, and then all of a sudden I show up Metro Plan one day, and it's all the way at the bottom, off the list, it's gone. And I think I made a call to Commissioner Delary, and I said, what the heck happened to our project? C'est la vie, that's, there's nothing we can do about that. That funding's not going to be available for many, many years. Something interesting, I mean, there's so much history behind all of this, and why the city has all the traffic coming down its main arteries rather than bypasses, which were part of the plan back in the 70s. Mr. Cobb has the planning book upstairs, that, who did that one? Porter?
Compton.
All right.
No, I'm on, Post Buckley.
Post Buckley did a report that was presented to city councils back in the late 70s, early 80s, before, you know, when this was all just still farm country, of these very scenarios happening, and how bypasses needed to be built around the city. They were basically planned, ready to be funded, and different decisions were made by different councils for different reasons. I mean, we can't fault them for the decisions they made at the time. We wish they would have been different. We would have had bypasses, we would have had constraints placed on our roadways, which is why the widening stop at our borders and don't come through. If the constraints weren't there, they probably would have been through already, because when they were widening up to 434 and coming up from UCF, they would have just kept going. But that's water under the bridge. A very interesting statistic I saw, though, and I don't know if anybody else noticed it, you have 24,000 cars coming down 417 to the curve, 5,000 of them disappear. Yeah, that's way back at the beginning. No, that's the right-of-way one, but we're going to get to that one in a second.
There it is.
There it is. We have 24,000 cars coming off of the 417, we lose nearly 5,000 of them at the curve. Now, that's the folks who are taking Florida half, I'm going to guess. That's where they're going, because they're heading out east, they're heading someplace else, they're cutting through. Then you've got your 19,000 heading down to Franklin, well, that's the rest of them going across Franklin through the smaller rotary, traffic circle, and either heading out 426 or heading out 419 to their eastern destination beyond our city. And then you have your 16,200 heading south, going to UCF, Research Park. That's where all those folks are going. So, you know, it's a cut-through issue in the whole city with limited availability of roadways for added capacity at this time. When I was in Carmel, Indiana, I don't know if you guys have anything to do with that, but they have 125 rotaries.
Right.
Traffic circles. They took out every stoplight. It was amazing to drive around the city, and they designed and built them exactly as what you showed us. When you, when you come up to it, it splits into two lanes, you go through the circle. If you're going to go around the circle, you go to the inside, and everybody knew how to drive on them, except for us. But everybody there knew how to use them.
And Mayor, before we actually get into the actual opening up the road, there's going to be a large education element to this.
And we're going to show people how to do it.
I don't know how we're going to do it yet, but we are committed to do an education program of educating the general public about traffic circles.
FDOT has a lot of resources that we can use on that.
That'll be, that'll probably be a wise decision.
And you won't need a membership.
Don't worry about it, if Drew's around, you will. The, the project is, is getting something done. It's not a throwaway on the north end. It's needed, it's needed sooner than later, but as you've heard us all say, I mean, in Metro Plan, five years is warp speed. I mean, you're not going to get anything done faster.
And Mayor, if we can do it faster, we will.
Of course. But, but here's the question I have, and if we can go, Barbara, if you can pull up Section 2, the right-of-way slide that I saw, that's going to be a few slides over.
The other way.
Yeah, it's towards, there you go, right there. Nope, go back one. Perfect, thank you. All right, here's my question. How do we get Section 2 included in this? Because you've got your right-of-way. It was 66 feet that you needed for right-of-way for what you showed us. We have 60 feet on that little tiny section, I'm sure we can find three feet on each side through there, because as a matter of fact, most of it on the, that would be the east side, there isn't anything. How do we get that done with the turn lane?
Mayor, here's what I would tell you. We would like to keep these two projects separated, that way we're not tying down one.
I'm not trying to tie it into one, I'm asking, how do we get Section 2 started?
I think if the city felt that Section 2 was very much needed and did a different request, not just to the district commissioners, as well as the two members of Metro Plan, as well as the Board of County Commissioners, we would start that, but this project, Phase 1 has.
We've got to keep them Section 1, Section 2, I get it.
I always have to talk about, two different projects are totally separate, but we would have no problem looking at it, we just got to figure out where there's available money.
Right, because as you mentioned, that section flows well until somebody tries to make a turn.
Yeah.
Then, you know, once somebody tries to make a turn without turning lanes down the center, that's where you see the accidents occur. To make that Section 4 lanes in the future is going to be, unless we take out a lot of houses, it's going to be very difficult. But to make it three lanes, as you showed us, in a complete street format, that could work.
Make a request.
Well, I think Mr. Cobb just wrote it down, that might be coming to you sooner than you think.
Make a request.
And we want to be a member, damn it.
One thinks that Ryan and I talked about, even in the future, the three-lane cross-section actually takes us deep into the future because of the lesser traffic demand on Section 2. So there isn't.
And that your signals have two, your signals are getting them out in two lanes in each direction.
That was the thing that we, because I questioned him when he first brought it up, so we don't need four lanes on the south end, that makes no sense. But when you look at how, the number, the level of traffic, when you look at the types of turn movements, and then like he said, with the operational improvements at Mitchell Hammock Road and 426, 419, the three-lane improvement, if we can get the turners out of the through lane, out of the through traffic, if we can get the turners off on their own, then we, yes, we can enhance the traffic operations and then buy a lot of time into the future without the need of the four-lane on Section 2. Right?
Yes, absolutely.
Well, Mayor, you're not suggesting we ask to replace Section 1 with?
Oh, God, no. Oh, no, 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 no. Too much work has gone into this.
Okay.
No, that trains, that train's heading down the tracks. What I'm saying is we'll make a request for the next section, since the right-of-way is there, and then the, we'll make it to, as the commissioner said, not only the county commissioners, district office, Metro Plan, for them to look at that as a part of complete streets, because that's, that's where this funding is coming from.
That's correct.
And there's different parameters for this funding than there would be for widening money. So if that can get included, excuse me, if that can get added as a different project at a different date.
That's the key.
As a complete street project in Section 2, there could be the possibility for a five- or six-year horizon for funding. It, to do something like we're doing on 419, 426 today is, is next to impossible with the way everything is lined up. You've got to be essentially ready to go in order to even have a chance to get on, on the list. There were a lot of projects, there were a lot of mayors wondering what happened to a lot of their projects, and then they, they all just disappeared one day, so. But, you know, and the MAC Committee has a, the committee that I sit on, has a seat on the Metro Plan Board. So I think it's Mayor McDonald now, right, from Maitland, who has the seat? So it's not as if the cities don't have a representative on the board, it's just that you have 20 representatives on this board, all trying to work together.
For the same dollar.
For the same dollar, for their communities. And it just becomes unbelievable, the battles that go on, you know, and a lot of money gets spent down in Orange County and other, and other communities. Seminole County gets a great share, those who are from Seminole County who sit on the big board, Commissioner Delary, Mayor Pat Bates, Mayor Triplet, we have the.
Commissioner Zimbauer.
Airport Authority.
Commissioner Zimbauer.
Commissioner Zimbauer, going to do a great job trying to get the money back up here into Seminole County, but, you know, a lot of the funding goes to Orange County, and a lot of the funding's going to I-For.
Mayor, just so everyone's aware of, when you talk about a lot of money going to Orange County, on an annual basis, we do look at a fair share of money being appropriated in different counties.
By population, and, yeah, I've seen the numbers. You know, Osceola County is finally catching up a little bit, because, I mean, for many years, nothing was being done down there. You sit on Metro Plan and they show us all these great things, and it'd be like, oh yeah, that's Osceola County, but, you know, finally, some of the things are being done down there.
That's how the bridge happened at Red Buck Lake Road by Home Depot, was because we were able to move it up through Metro Plan and D5. That's how that bridge happened.
But I think this is, this is great. I, Brian, if you could work on letter resolution or something to ask that Section 2 be a separate project, let's not commingle these things.
And Mayor, I'll take away, tonight is going to be that, the consultant for some of the counties, we're looking at what that cross-section is at the fire station, get that back to you and your staff.
We'd like that.
As well as, he's already done this, and it's not in the presentation, but the intersection comparisons of short-term and long-term, Ryan?
Yeah.
Of traffic light versus roundabout, and it'd be an eye-opener. And if you, when you look at that, it looks at the letters of classification A through F. You can actually see that by putting these roundabouts in, you actually went from a failing intersection with a traffic light to an excellent passing grade of an A or a B with the roundabout.
Well, sounds good to me.
We'll make sure you get that.
I'm assuming, from what I heard this evening, we have consensus for the resolution to be passed on, or presented on Monday, hopefully for being met with approval? We can leave the commissioner with that going forward?
If you don't mind, I would like to be back Monday?
Of course.
In case there's any questions. I believe Ryan, we'll both be here.
More than welcome, of course, anytime. Are there any other questions on what we were presenting this evening? Mr. Cobb?
On the 7th, with the, with the resolution expressing support, is it something that I can put on consent, or would you prefer that we put it on the resolution section?
Is the agenda large? And then just throw it under resolutions and.
Okay.
And then maybe at the following meeting in October, so we don't inundate them with letters and resolutions, bring the second section back, so that way it's not confused. And make sure, however that reads, that it is a separate project.
I think we, we would just address that. We'd set our parameter as 434 to Mitchell Hammock.
Okay. Anything else? Commissioner, thank you. Ryan, always nice to see you. Thank you for your time. We do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers.
And at this time, hearing no other business, we're going to be adjourned.